Okay, I'll go ahead and call the January 13th, 2025 McDowell County Board of Commissioners's regular monthly session ordered. And we'll start out with our, as always, our prayer and our pledge. But before that, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight. We've got some very special people here tonight and some we're going to pay tribute to. And so we welcome everyone and look forward to a good meeting. So we'll stand and Commissioner David Walker will lead us in prayer and Commissioner Garner will lead us in the pledge.
That's right. Dear heavenly Father, thank you, dear Lord, for this day and all your many blessings. Just thank you for the privilege to come together as local government, dear God, to help those that we represent. I just pray, dear Lord, to give us guidance and wisdom as we do this job, dear Lord. We don't take it lightly, dear God, and we want to do what's right on your side and right for the people we represent. And dear Lord, I just pray you bless every person in this room tonight, bless them and their families, dear Lord, and I just pray for the people out in California, our people in western North Carolina, dear God, that's still facing terrible loss. I just pray, dear Lord, you meet those needs for these people and we just thank you for all your many blessings. In your name we pray, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion, we approve to minutes.
So may.
Second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda. Mr. Wood and I would like to move the McDowell County Sheriff's Office update up to item A. Commissioner Allison won't be here tonight for his recognition, so it pleases the board, I'd like to move the sheriff's.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda with the change requested by the chairman, moving item D to item A.
And also on the committee item that is coming up tonight, was to come up tonight on this, do I hear?
I'd like to make a motion to table till next meeting.
Okay.
When all commissioners can be attending.
Got motion table.
You got one motion to take care of prior to that motion.
Well, can we do it on one?
I can modify, I'll modify my motion to include that.
Yeah, I wasn't quite.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, I'm in favor of the first motion. Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Okay, the second item was the committee and we had a motion on it from Commissioner Ellis. Do we have a second?
We got, we already covered already.
Okay.
Thank you.
He amended this, our original motion. All right, good deal. All right then, moving along to item A under our appointments tonight, we're gonna have, we're proud to have our sheriff here tonight with us and we're gonna let him come up and say a few words and recognize some of his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, just to give some recognition to some of our folks on an extraordinary seizure of dangerous deadly narcotics in McDowell November 13th of this year, our McDowell County Drug Enforcement Group have been working actually for months, been working investigation into the illegal sale and distribution of methamphetamine on one major supplier here in McDowell County. They'd worked this for several months. Well, on November 13th, a decision was made by the supervisors in that unit to go ahead and conduct a traffic stop on this individual that we had information on that was currently out of town and coming back into McDowell County. And as a result of that stop, we seized an extraordinary 50 kilograms of methamphetamine. That was over 110 pounds and also an additional pound of methamphetamine was seized subsequent to that stop at the suspect's residence, along with about 25 hours. The street value of that methamphetamine on that particular stop was in excess $3.8 million street value. And I want to bring that to the attention because there is a problem and we face it every day with drugs in McDowell County, with drugs in the state of North Carolina, drugs in the United States. And the tireless efforts of the men and women that don't get their pictures in the papers. They don't get recognized as much as they deserve and we all know that that's part of their assignment, that's part of their job description, that's part of what they sign up for is that they don't get the recognition because of their work, because of their ability to try to infiltrate, to try to blend in with their environments whenever they're doing surveillance or whenever they're doing undercover work. These men and women put their lives on the line every day and they don't get that recognition because we try to keep their identities out of the newspapers and out of social media. Because like I said, this one particular stop was a street value of $3.8 million. So somebody is out $3.8 million. And I know that to a drug cartel, somebody's life is nothing to them and they have a total disregard for lives and for those that they're destroying, much less the law enforcement detectives that take this from them. So we like to say we disrupt and we dismantle. I'm here to tell you that on November 13th, the McDowell County Drug Enforcement did just that. They disrupted and dismantled part of this organization on this particular day. And I want to bring recognition to the McDowell County Drug Enforcement. Now, I'm here to let you know that that McDowell County Drug Enforcement is a collaborative effort. The Marion Police Department and the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation work with us at the sheriff's office in part of this McDowell County Drug Enforcement. And it was a great collaborative effort and again, a testament to what we can accomplish working together than independently and trying to work on our own. And I'd like to also thank those that participated, being the police department, being the State Bureau of Investigation. And also on that particular stop, we also had the assistance of the DEA, we had the assistance of Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, Henderson County Sheriff's Office, and the North Carolina State Highway Patrol. Again, these men and women put their lives on the line. Unlike a regular patrol deputy, unlike a regular police officer that gets to put that bulletproof vest on that you see, a lot of times, these folks doing these type of surveillance and undercover activities, they don't have the luxury of that. They go as they are, trying to blend in and portray to be somebody that they're not in an effort to combat disrupting dismantle drug trafficking organizations. So I'm here tonight to let you know, I've got members of my command staff here as well with me and we applaud the efforts of this McDowell County Drug Enforcement. So I've got one more item, so if you guys want to say anything regarding that seizure, please.
Yeah. Ricky, you know, we've got a letter of appreciation here and I feel compelled to read that to you so everyone can hear that here tonight. We appreciate all that you guys have done and as I said earlier in meeting with those boys in the conference room, that are the unsung heroes that work without any recognition and they're not really visible to the public, but they're doing a wonderful job in protecting this county from the drugs and illegal crime that goes on. And I'll just read this right quick, it says, Sheriff Ricky Buchanan, "On behalf of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners, I would like to commend you and the dedicated team for the exceptional work you are doing to improve the community through drug and addiction efforts. Your department's ongoing commitment to combating illegal drug activity is making a meaningful impact on the safety and well-being of the citizens of McDowell County. Proactive measures taken by your office to remove dangerous substances from the streets, apprehend those responsible for drug trafficking, and offer support to those affected by the addiction are a testament of your leadership and the professionalism of your staff. The efforts are helping to create a safer, healthier environment for all. Your unwavering dedication is truly commendable. We recognize the long hours and the risk involved in these operations and we appreciate the sacrifice made by you and your staff to protect our community. The success of these initiatives reflects the high standards of integrity, diligence, and teamwork demonstrated by the McDowell County Sheriff's Office under your leadership. Please accept our deepest thanks and gratitude for the tremendous work that you and your team do, continue to do. We are proud to stand with you in the mission to make McDowell County a safer place for all."
I appreciate it. I'm very fortunate to be and work alongside these men and women. They're the ones that are out there doing it and a lot of times, my name gets mentioned a lot, but I want to make sure the recognition goes to the men and women that are out there doing it. So I appreciate that.
We'd like to present to you this, are you finished?
I got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I do want to bring up for recognition Rodney Coats. Rodney, if you'll come join me. Rodney Coats is our Facility Maintenance Coordinator at the Sheriff's Office. Rodney came to work with us in June of 2019. He oversees facility maintenance, building grounds at that sheriff's office and what a fantastic job he does. We'll talk about somebody else who don't get the recognition. If there's a toll that stopped up at that sheriff's office, they start yelling for Rodney. You know how many people we can hold at that detention facility. He also oversees everything regarding HVAC units he oversaw just this year alone, the replacement of several HVAC units he also oversaw. We totally agreed in the showers in all of our detention facility this year, which was a major project, just to name a few of the things that he did. Also replacing our hot water heaters, we went to a tankless hot water system this year and Rodney juggles all this. And that is along with the every day, there's a light out Rodney, we need to try to get a light fixed and whatever, but what blows me away and reminds me of what he does is when I have visiting sheriffs or we have visiting people come to that office and they cannot believe how old that building is and how good it looks. And it is key, we call it, he's the key person responsible for that. So I wanted you all to know that this is our 2024 Employee of the Year, Rodney Coats with McDowell County Sheriff's Office. We recognized him at our Christmas dinner and presented him with his awards. And how we do that, so you know, every month, our command staff, we do an employee of the month every month at our office. So every month, command staff turns in their nominees for employees of the month. We collectively decide among the command staff who gets that employee of the month. At the end of the year, we let it to us 12 employees or however many there were for the year and then we choose our employee of the month that I have the privilege to do. So I was happy to give that to Rodney this year.
Rodney, we appreciate you and that was a well-deserved and certainly a well-earned award.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate you for that. Thank you. And yes, could you give us a quick picture of that? Give us a picture.
Captain Shannon Smith, Rodney, if you'll come out.
Okay, next on the agenda, item B is Economic Development Public hearing. Good. She's better looking than you, aren't you?
A lot. You ready?
Yes.
Ashley, you got, you want to introduce anything or?
I think you can probably take it and then I can fill in where needed, I think.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me and I very much, very much appreciate the opportunity to address you and we have several people here. So we've got an economic development project that we have been working on for a year and two months. And you have received a briefing on this in closed session and that closed session has got a few tweaks to it that we'll go over, but it's largely the same project as we've previously talked about. I'm not going to overview what the company will present to you and repeat what they've done. The project involves the bank building at the corner of Fort and North Main Street and the replacement of that bank building with a four-story Marriott hotel with accompanying retail shops. And in order to conduct and be involved in that as a unit of local government, there's a statute, as there is with everything, that you have to follow and that statute has a public hearing requirement, which is what you're wanting to do this evening. There is not an urgent speed at this, but there is some urgency. We're looking, we've got the property under contract for about another five weeks and then we would lose that. So essentially, what you have is an incentive proposal that would have the two units of local government purchase the property and with protective covenants in place, use that in order to have the facility constructed. We're looking at a 15 to $20 million investment and we're looking at a 10 full-time employees. Those numbers are probably low. And we are looking at the companies, or excuse me, the building returning to the city and the county in the event that the project somehow fails to materialize. We've broken the payments out over three fiscal years so that there's less of a burden or a hit. And depending upon how you calculate it, we're looking at about a 14-month return with tangible tax dollars coming back to you and then indirect dollars would be on top of that. So you want to say anything?
Sure. I'll just want to thank the county commissioners tonight for your representation at the Marion City Council meeting. Last Tuesday night, the Marion City Council reviewed this incentive agreement and unanimously approved the adoption of that agreement. So I just wanted to thank you again for your representation there and to let you know that the city of Marion did unanimously approve this incentive agreement at their Tuesday meeting last week.
City staff, county staff, and my office have, it's just hard to describe the amount of work that goes into something like this, but the property is under contract. The, that I think goes through the first week of February. The incentive documents were approved by the city council. So we are, we had a Phase One environmental audit on the property, which reminded old timers that there was a fuel station on the property years ago, which required some additional testing. That additional testing took place and no additional testing is needed. So we think we are clear to go. So with that, if it's all right, I'm going to introduce David and Michael and get them to overview the project. And do you have any questions of Heather and myself?
I think, Mr. Mayor, would you like to say a word before he brings those other fellows up?
I would love to. I would have a modify, I would modify slightly the comment that Ms. Cotton made that it was a unanimous, it was a unanimous and enthusiastic verdict in favor. We look forward to the day when people can walk out the front door of this building, glance to their left, and they'll see a four-story wonderful, beautiful, I don't want to get ahead of myself, hotel right there on the corner. That's going to bring in people every night, it'll bring in groups, the people will start recognizing that Marion and McDowell County are becoming a destination. We're smaller than asphalt. That's a good thing, but we want to have high-class, top-flight service available right here in downtown Marion and it is a very, very exciting thing. And it's hard for me to contain myself. So it's a pleasure to be here, as it is always a pleasure to be with the commissioners. As Sheriff Buchanan said, the cooperation is something that we are well-known for in McDowell County and the ability to recognize the most fantastic, best economic opportunity that anybody has seen, certainly in my tenure here since 1985 as a public elected official and probably for the next 40 years after that. Thank you so much and appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to ask David and Michael to come forward and give you a little overview of the project.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, commissioners, for giving us time to speak. I know you've been briefed on everything in closed session, so we'll be briefing our remarks. Our company is Benchmade Ventures and it was an investment and development firm and on the development side, we focus predominantly on hotels. And so, for example, the downtown Fairfield Marriott more than that was our project. And so we like these type of markets where we can really immerse ourselves in the local communities, in the downtown settings, and really provide an option for people who really want to get to know the surrounding area and spend some time and some money in the local economy, without terms of microeconomic.
Sure. So the, as Chuck mentioned, we'd be looking at something in the Marriott portfolio. We work exclusively with Marriott. We'd be looking at about 100 rooms with some ground floor retail as well and all onsite parking, so parking would be managed and not have to consume street parking or anything of that nature. As far as the economic investment, around $18 million, plus or minus, we're saying, you know, 15 to 20 with the variance there, bringing in revenues of approximately $4 million. That's relevant because there's a downstream impact. Studies have shown that a guest to a property, for every dollar they spend on their hotel room, they spend another $2 in the community on various things, whether it's food and beverage, gas, grocery, whatever. Total direct economic impact via various tax revenues, whether it's sales tax, occupancy tax, or add valorum taxes of between $500,000 and $600,000 a year. And that's just on the primary and then you've got another $8 million in revenues going to the county businesses, which would produce incrementally more sales tax, et cetera. So that's the economic opportunity that's before us. Appreciate you guys entertaining it and answer any questions that you may have.
I'll make one statement. I do like the fact that you've got a proven model close to us in a county similarly located in western North Carolina, so I'm looking forward to your, you guys getting this hotel up and renting.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I'm always excited to see growth in the county, but I'm also, I guess it's the business part of me, I always am interested in the revenue, the return that comes back to the county. So those numbers are very important to me, the return that we get back from this. But we appreciate you guys coming down and making us part of it.
The numbers you shared are very favorable and I know that there's a lot of smaller businesses here in the county that sometimes will have people coming in and hopefully you can work with the small businesses in the county and hopefully give people some discounts and stuff like that so that you can draw them downtown. We do have other opportunities out of the city, but it's a good opportunity. It's a lot of education to the public because there's a lot of questions, why do we want to own this? And you know, as far as the property, it is going to be a joint venture and it is a very good opportunity for us all. And I want to wish you the best of luck and break the ground soon as we can.
Thank you, sir.
So, good deal.
Mr. Chairman, before you declare a public hearing, would you like me to hit the highlights of the incentive agreement?
Sure.
More specifically. So I will point out one correction to the copy you have in your packet in the performance agreement. The company, as Mr. Abernathy alluded to in great detail, they would be compelled to perform in exchange for public funding. And the performance in this instance is the construction of a hotel of at least 75 rooms on that property. In the agreement, it does say by July 1st of 2027, as far as the copy having your packet. And that was negotiated right in the midst of this being put together with attorneys and everyone. What was agreed to by the developers was December 31st, 2027. So again, we would ask for, when you adopt, if you adopt the agreement tonight, that you have that updated date in it because there is some negotiation that went into this agreement over the last couple of weeks as this is being put together. Again, as it lays out in the agreement, what is agreed to in writing so far and what has been voted on by city council is both entities acting essentially in unison would make three payments over three fiscal years, including the current fiscal year, July 1, 2025, and July 1, 2026 to the developer. So this would be a performance-based payment. And again, if they do not perform, as Mr. Abernathy discussed, the property will revert back to city and county. Each entity would pay $499,000 total into three more or less equal payments. And so if you do the math, as was mentioned, that equals the purchase price for the appraised value of the property. And so again, the developers buy the property, it will be in their name, it'll be in private ownership, stay taxable, but there is an incentive tied to it. So do you have any questions about the agreement as it's laid out? Your next point would be to declare a public hearing and receive public input.
Okay. All right, I'd like to, your motion to clear this public hearing.
So may.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now in the public hearing mode and is there anyone on the right in the public that would like to make a statement? that would like to make a statement?
May I, please?
Yes. You said on the right?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you anticipate there's going to be a tax increase because of this funding proposal from the city or the county?
No, sir.
Is there... Secondly, is there a performance bond that the builders have put up?
The performance is building the hotel. If they do not perform by the deadline, the property reverts back to the county and the city.
Anyone else on the right?
As a potential traffic congestion by having that many people in one place in a city benediction?
We would have to refer to the city, I guess, to... Mr. Mayor, can you respond to that?
We have opportunities constantly for traffic issues. Halloween, for example, there's a lot of people on Halloween. We are prepared and will be prepared to deal with that, Jeff. So that's a good issue to raise, but that's a good problem to have, but we'll be able to deal with that safely.
I can mention that the hotel expects about, on average, 65 to 70 cars per day. So it's a very minimal impact as versus some other types of businesses which are very concentrated. It's really 65 to 70 cars per day is what we look at.
Anyone else on the right? Okay, moving to the left. Anyone on the left, actually? Yes, sir.
I'm Frank Dean. I have been a commercial with the state appraisal for 40 years. I did the appraisal on that building for the purpose. And the opportunity that is being afforded Marion right now is second to none since I've been a citizen of Marion in the last 45 years. I'm very excited about the project. I don't see any loops in it. I support it 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Dean? Anyone else on the left?
I'm Freddie Keller, Marion Business Association, and Marion Business Association heartily endorses this project. We're very excited to see this. It's not very many small towns of 8,000 that have this opportunity, so we're very, very excited. And if we can do anything to support this, we are here to help support it. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to throw my supporting as well. I'm Shannon Wood, the McDowell County Tourism Development Authority, and it's a proof of the fact hotels bring vibrancy downtown. It's a gathering place for the locals as well as visitors. People have weddings there, people have meetings, and they're actually help other hotels that are currently in the area as well by giving us the opportunity to bring in larger meetings that we might not be able to have because we don't have enough rooms. So it actually gives us more development as far as conferences and meetings to bring in. And they're exactly right about the economic development impact. For every $100 that someone spends on lodging, it's proving that they bring $220 back in direct and indirect spending. So you have that direct spending from the hotel itself and the guests. You're spending it locally in the economy. Then you have that indirect spending, which the hotel contributes to, and that's the supply chain of delivering food to the hotel, staffing that gift shop, the employment. And then you have that induced spending, which is when a hotel employee takes that money and returns it and spends it in the local economy as well. So you have really three contributing factors to that local impact of a hotel. So we support it wholeheartedly as well.
Thanks, Shannon. David, did you got some?
David Wooden, I'm a city resident and a county resident, chairman of the McDowell Economic Development Association. This project's got full endorsement of the new board and also is the neighbor. We're from the first bank, and these are our future neighbors. We welcome them to the city and want all the members to us. And Sheriff, thank you for watching the news from here. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else? Do you hear a motion go out of second?
Second.
I want to favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead. Based upon this excellent data we've heard, $50,000 sales tax generated per year, $89,000 property tax generated per year, $414,000 to the county generated, payback in 14 months, create 10 full-time jobs. They'll be spending the money back into the economy, the employees. Currently, we're receiving $5,000 in property tax on that building. That building is a dated building, old building that's been on the market forever. And I appreciate the fact you've got outside investors that are willing to come into McDowell County and provide such an excellent addition to our downtown. And so also, $531,000 in direct revenue staying in the county. The partnership between the city and county is as strong as ever. And 100 new rooms, 75 to 100 new rooms. They indicate 100 new rooms available. I don't see how we can lose on this deal. I think it's a positive thing for McDowell County, and I wholeheartedly endorse this and make a motion to proceed on with the partnership as outlined per the contractual agreement and look forward to groundbreaking.
And for the closure to be December 31st, 2027?
Thank you, Patrick. Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I would like to add, the question was, Rose, about whether this would create more property taxes for the citizens of the county. This will create revenue for this county. And as David mentioned, this will be a quick payback for the county. And if anything, it will help keep us from having to raise taxes in the future because we will be getting a significant revenue from this. So as myself and I think the whole board here, we certainly do endorse this and think it's going to be good for the city, good for the county, and there will be a reward for us at the end of the day. So we have a motion, second, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I carry it. All right, next on the agenda was... would be our Helene update, and we have Mr. William Keller here to give us that. So, William, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure for us to be back providing an update on Hurricane Helene. Recovery efforts today is day 111 that the Emergency Operations Center has been activated in response to Hurricane Helene. We do not have the PowerPoint on the...
Should be working on it.
TV. If we could get the PowerPoint up for our IT folks in the back.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I do want to say to William, going over and reading that information, the... I really appreciate the fact, the timelines that you guys have went in and put in there so people know when a road's supposed to be open, and very, very...
Sure.
Very sorry. We need to bring this sound key around with us.
We're fortunate to have the emergency services here as well as the law enforcement, Sheriff's Department. We have got second to none. We appreciate what all you guys do.
Stop that the sheriff mentioned. I mean, that's unbelievable, and that affects us in a positive manner.
Absolutely.
There's a trickle-down effect there. It's always a pleasure working with all of the law enforcement partners.
Just hiding in plain sight.
There we go. Are you able to see it now?
We're good.
All right.
Sorry for the delay.
Start off with the update on the road situation. US 221 North at Mountain Paradise Campground and Highway 70 West at Curtis Creek, those temporary bridges continue to be under construction. North Carolina DOT TIM system shows a potential restoration or opening date of those temporary structures at the end of January. NC-80, no current update or timeline on that from the school bus turnaround to the Blue Ridge Parkway as there was substantial amount of landslides and damage in that area. We continue to work, moving on to the lakes. We continue to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA regarding the debris cleanup there at Lake Tahoma. The most recent update is FEMA and Army Corps conducted sonar testing to determine the extent of debris under the water there at Lake Tahoma. We received an update today regarding Lake James and the damage to the hydro station. Progress is being made faster than what was predicted to where one of the turbines will be online in the middle of February, which allows them to pull water off of Lake James. There are currently three units that are damaged. The second unit is scheduled to be online later on in 2025, with the third unit coming on later in the year. That affects the ability to draw water down prior to a heavy rainfall event. So that's something that the Emergency Ops Center continues to monitor closely as Lake James continues to spill over the spillway there.
So that could impact flooding if a major rain...
Absolutely.
...storm moved in without this turbine?
Water and sewer, the town of Old Fort, we visited. Mr. Wooden and I and a number of my staff, along with Governor Stein's office, visited the wastewater treatment plant in Old Fort. They continue to make steady progress there. The wells, of course, have been back online shortly after the storm, and then the city of Marion reporting no issues. On the utilities front, a lot of questions that we're getting, and I'm sure you're getting as well, is Frontier. Frontier is difficult for the EOC on a blue-sky day as far as getting restoration times, getting service restored quickly. And this is the same thing that we're seeing with hurricane recovery. They are rebuilding a number of lines in these rural areas, 226A, NC-80, Mill Creek, Curtis Creek, and a number of other small areas. The current restoration time is the end of January, and that is the latest update that we have received. We do have a temporary sail trailer from Verizon. Those assets are called cals or colts, sail on wheels or sail on light trailer. The one that is there on NC-80 is what we call a colt, a sail-on-light trailer. So Verizon continues to operate that portable or temporary device at Sunnyvale Baptist Church there to provide some form of 911 access should an emergency occur north of Sunnyvale Church, which we appreciate them doing. We continue to operate the 24-hour disaster hotline. Any citizen, anyone in this county who has a storm-related question has access 24 hours a day to a member of the emergency operations staff. In the overnight hours, we roll that into our non-emergency line at the communications center. If it is a crisis or an urgent need that is storm-related, they will make contact with a member of our EOC staff to pass along that concern. But I want to make sure citizens know we're months out from this disaster, but they still have access seven days a week, 24 hours a day. If they have storm-related questions, they can call that hotline and receive an answer or receive a callback from a member of our staff shortly thereafter. That number is 828-652-3241. Community comfort stations, we are continuing to support citizens who are having difficulty with their wells. We have seen a number of calls where wells were damaged or wells are no longer operational. Our understanding, there is a severe backlog or wait time to get a new well drilled due to the number of people wanting new wells. So we continue to operate community comfort stations. These are FEMA assets or paid for... Excuse me, by FEMA. We're operating two of these, 135 Water Street in Old Fort and then at 5878 US 221 North in the Woodlong community. Those are still in place and will continue to evaluate those needs as we move along through the winter. That provides 24-hour access to showers and laundry services there. FEMA continues to operate a disaster recovery center in Marion. That is the only one that is currently open. There have been disaster recovery centers closing in other counties. Our team continues to advocate for this disaster recovery center to remain open. I think it's important for people to be able to walk in and talk to someone face-to-face, especially for our elderly population, and not have to resort to the 1-800 number or to the FEMA website. So we will continue to advocate this center be open as long as possible. And it's at the lower level, the senior center, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The presentation is off again. Is it off on your computer?
Yes, that came back.
Okay. So new developments since the last time that we were here. And I want to recognize Deputy Director Jones. She does an amazing job, along with our entire EOC staff. You're seeing me on these monthly updates, but it is the staff that is working tirelessly behind the scenes. They are literally wearing multiple hats and have taken on another full-time job, literally each one of them, and still doing their daily duties. And can't say enough of what staff is doing, and Adrian's a huge part of that. Since the last update and since the last time I was here, there's been some encouraging news. Governor Stein issued North Carolina Executive Order Number 1, which directs North Carolina Emergency Management to rapidly purchase 1,000 temporary travel trailers. There is a significant delay with FEMA providing housing for our citizens. I have been very clear in praising FEMA for their response shortly after the hurricane with search and rescue missions and the assets that they provided us and how we precisely executed hundreds and hundreds of search and rescue missions with a lot of that support and equipment coming from outside resources. However, they have got to pick up their game when it comes to recovery. Our citizens need help, they need answers, and they are moving too slow. And we need them to move faster. And this is the message that I'm communicating daily to the FEMA rep that is in our EOC because people need to recover faster, and they need answers quicker than what they are receiving. And that's one of the reasons that the executive order is out because we still have people waiting on housing, temporary housing in this county. Since the number this morning, since the hurricane, FEMA has put 22 families in temporary housing in McDowell County, and we still have 10 waiting. And those are, when I say temporary housing, that is either a travel trailer or a mobile home. We have a FEMA mobile home park in this county that has been stood up for months now, but this number we are seeing is not moving, and it hasn't moved. And that is why we are constantly pushing them to move faster, cut the red tape, and we've got to take care of these people faster than... Or receive assistance faster than what they are. They provided $15,537,000. There's been over 11,379 applications. If you do the math on that, that is not a lot of money per application. It's something that we continue to push FEMA on each day. North Carolina Executive Order Number 2. And before I go to that, let me just say our operations division, since the 2nd of January, has placed 14 individuals in temporary travel trailers in conjunction with this state program and the assistance of nonprofit organizations. 14 since January 2nd. And we have 22 from the federal side since the hurricane occurred. North Carolina Executive Order Number 2 is what we have spoke about at this meeting for the past several months, the need for North Carolina to stand up the private road and bridge program through the Office of State Budget Management, also known as OSBM. This is a very effective program, as you've heard me talk about. We utilized it after Tropical Storm Fred. It was very efficient, it was timely, it got the citizens the help they needed quickly. And North Carolina Executive Order Number 2 directs North Carolina Emergency Management to work with North Carolina Office of State Budget Management to stand this program up again. OSBM made... Immediately made contact with our agency right after this executive order came out. We have given them our damage assessment of the bridges and the roads that have been reported as out in McDowell. So they were able to get that information in real time. We have done our due diligence and are ready to move forward with them. They worked alongside us in our EOC after Fred, and they have communicated they intend or would like to work alongside us at our facility to recover from Helene.
Is there funding in the State Office of Budget and Management? Is there funding in there now? The federal government was going to place money to the state. Is that money being allocated?
I haven't seen the allocation to OSBM. I haven't seen the allocation to OSBM. It was the order for NCEM to, directing them to work with OSBM to stand the program up. I have not seen that funding allocated.
Has the state of North Carolina funded to any degree that this private roads and bridges?
In the past or?
No, no, currently, currently.
No, that program is currently not stood up. It just came out of the executive order for OSBM to be stood up. I expect in the next four to six weeks, we'll learn of what the application process and what the program is going to look like. But it's good news for our folks who literally have met a dead end because these bridges and these roads are going to be a lot more expensive this time around than they were with Fred, simply due to the magnitude of damage, the width of the creek banks, and just how devastating this flood was.
Well, I've seen where people, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Just to make it clear to those that are listening tonight, the application for that, what is the deadline on that?
It hasn't come out yet. As far as the process, it has not been rolled out of. The application period is now open, all of that is still yet to come. The biggest hurdle, though, was getting OSBM tasked with leading this recovery program.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Wooten, if you've got anything to add?
All I was going to add, there was a thought maybe right before Christmas that there would be federal set aside for private roads and bridges. I might have emailed actually to the board. That provision came out of the budget bill in Congress. I don't think we know where the money is going to be coming from, whether it's state or federal funds yet, but the governor and his staff are trying to get in front of it.
Well, the state's sitting on a $4 billion reserve in there, they need to let go of it.
I agree.
And this is the issue that Mr. Keller brought up about the recovery effort. I think this board should, I'd like to make a suggestion or even a motion to draft a letter and send it to FEMA from this board requesting that there be some attention to our.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we send a letter to FEMA, to Ted Budd, and to Edwards stating our support and our need for this program to be fully funded to help the people that we represent in western North Carolina.
Okay, good motion.
Is that also in the concern that he's brought up as well as it being FEMA's kind of being slow, slower?
Yes, that needs to be stayed in the lead, yes, sir. I mean that to include.
For that, I second that motion.
Any other questions, comments? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
I have a question about, is it just roads and bridges only, private roads and bridges only because of the, there's been a lot of slides and damage to ponds and different things like that? Just asking a question.
Sure. And landslide mitigation, I'm going to talk about that in just a minute, there is a program that's currently being worked.
Okay.
I would like to go back and talk about housing just a second, I missed this number. We currently have 127 housed in hotels. If an individual has not been approved for an extension, that checkout date, that TSA eligibility ends tomorrow with FEMA. And as I said, we have 22 in the temporary homes and then 10 are waiting. That has been another point of contention the last 72, 96 hours, as it was initially extended for a 24-hour period, then they extended it for a 48-hour period. These people need more certainty.
They're going to be homeless.
And our team is prepared for an increase in calls potentially tomorrow. We've seen an increase in our traffic overall last week and then today was busy again with our call center and folks walking into our headquarters for various reasons. That's another example of we've got to push FEMA to do better case management and get these people transitioned into safe temporary housing in a more timely manner. Moving on, touch on some of the communities, Old Ford, the EOC continues to support the town of Old Ford in the recovery process. Significant amount of debris removal has occurred in that town. We are now, we've got boots-on-the-ground emergency managers working to assist individual property owners in the town as well as these other communities that we're working in that were severely affected. We've got properties in Old Ford where trailers have washed down, outbuildings, vehicles, and working with each of these landowners to make sure they know what programs are available, what programs they need to apply for. And in many instances, sending out a team member or having that citizen come to our office and walking them through the online application, assisting them with that. So it's just not, here's where you go to apply. It's truly providing that customer service experience. And as we said at the beginning, we take recovery just as serious as we did response and we're going to walk right beside these citizens through this entire process, which is going to turn out to be a lengthy process. But that's an example of some of the groundwork that continues in recovery. I've got this picture here, I think it really translates to the work that is being done by so many organizations, so many business owners, city, town, county government working together, the EOC assisting. Picture on the left was taken shortly after the disaster and these pictures, of course, were from last week showing the difference in the town. I mean, the significant amount of debris removal in coordination and a lot of hard work by so many, especially business owners and town officials there in Old Ford.
I fear that the problems that they're having on the west coast in the LA area right now, I fear that that's going to hurt us here.
It's definitely something that we're in tune with and tracking and having conversations with the Forest Service. Our initial concern is the fire roads being blocked at this point. And as that timber dries out through early '25 into the summer months, you're only increasing that fire load that is on the forest floor and is a major concern moving forward.
And also in reference to the money, I'm afraid that the feds might be more concerned about the others.
And Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right, I think, because I've seen this play out of one disaster as it hits, it gets a lot of the attention, it is the main news story. And then unfortunately, other disasters continue to hit and it sucks the oxygen from, and the attention from the disaster. And this is something that we've got to continue driving home.
Exactly.
From all angles, that this disaster is still ongoing. We still have people that are hurting, we still have people that need assistance, and our team's not leaving. Our team is not going to leave them behind, but we've got to continue beating the drum to get the assistance in.
We'll just continue to remind our legislators of the problems here.
And keep us posted too, Mr. Chairman, what we can do as a board nationally with recommendations on how we can help because that's what we're here for, to help our people. So.
The operations section, we've got dedicated emergency managers. We certainly appreciate the support you've provided us with the emergency managers that were assigned in addition to our normal staff. They are assisting the residents. Our direction to them is boots-on-the-ground, making contact with these folks at their home, at the damaged site, working with the business owners, addressing critical needs, assisting with debris applications, information sharing is huge, hazard mitigation, and then advocating for our citizens when communicating with FEMA. We continue to host a volunteer housing coordination meeting at the Emergency Operations Center that is led by Jerry Lewis. We're going to have to move to a different room at the EOC. Last week it was overflowing with people and continued new faces and new organizations that are showing up and making those long-term commitments to our citizens. The nonprofits, faith-based communities are the ones that are driving the assistance to the citizens. And if it wasn't for them, I mean, this thing would look completely different. But these volunteers and organization groups and churches continue to lead the charge in these communities and they're making substantial.
You don't see these woke ideology crowds of people down here helping somebody in Old Ford or in Burns or Spruce Pine?
There's people showing up. The last group that arrived was from Gaston County. They're working alongside Jerry and his team to really dig in and bring attention. This group is more about sharing the stories, the work that is ongoing to attract additional donors, to provide additional money into the county. Moving on to debris, we are, as a reminder, utilizing direct federal assistance via FEMA for our debris. That means US Army Corps is being tasked as the main lead agency. They contract or they sub that out. The current contractor is Ashford. That's a very well-known reputable company. Those are the ones, those are the trucks you're seeing on the road along with Ashford subcontractors that are picking up roadside debris. 40,104 cubic yards of debris removed as of this morning, 20,812 tons of river silt that has been picked up in the various communities. A lot of that has come from the North Fork and the Catawba in Old Ford as well as the North Fork in Ashford, if you will. The temporary debris management site, we get questions from time to time about that site in Old Ford. It was recently inspected by NCDQ, it was in compliance and they received no violations. They're keeping that field as neat as possible. I mean, it looks as good as it can, but as a reminder, that is only a temporary hold of site. Once this operation is over, all of that debris will be carried away. So we're currently still on right-of-way on state roads. We are accepting applications for right-of-way private roads and developments. If you have a citizen that still has debris down on their property, they need assistance, they can apply under the FEMA application, which is online at the McDowellgov.com/debris. They can call our hotline and we can walk them through that, or they can always come in person to our headquarters and we will assist them. Waterway debris removal, we were the first county to complete all of our waterway assessments. This was a joint effort between the emergency management teams, Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA, actually boots-on-the-ground on these waterways, assessing over 700 points that were recorded, sent to FEMA for eligibility determination. We have those back. It was about a 22% ineligible rate that we received. And our team is in the process of going through and understanding what they deemed ineligible, reviewing it, and we will make an appeal if we determine that that site, we think that site is eligible. So from here, the waterway assessment, the ones that were deemed eligible go to Army Corps of Engineers to write a scope of work and then they will bid that out and award a contract to begin cleaning up right-ofways, or I'm sorry, waterways. Here's the thing, our staff will then have to work with the contractor to determine entry points and get right-of entries signed. And those right-of entries, the Corps doesn't do that, it is the responsibility of the county and the EOC staff will be the one responsible. I want to make it clear to the folks listening or those that are in the room, no one is going to come on your property unless you give them permission. This is a voluntary program, even in the waterways. If you don't give someone access to come on your property because they want to clean up the waterway behind your property or near your property, you have that right and they're not going to come on the property unless there's a right-of entry form signed. I will say on waterway, that first phase is bank-to-bank clearing debris that poses a risk to critical infrastructure, meaning a bridge that is there or will be there, homes, utility poles, anything that could be deemed critical. That is what the first phase is designed to do, is remove that. The second phase, working with soil and water and the NRC, will be the Emergency Watership Program or EWP, which looks at debris outside of the banks as well as creek bank restoration. I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but I want to make sure you've got a complete update if citizens ask you. Moving on to hazard mitigation, Adrian is leading this program as the local point of contact for the EOC. The hazard mitigation, there are essentially three parts to this. Number one is a citizen can apply for an elevation grant, meaning their structure was damaged, it has been flooded, the storm, prior storms. They can apply for that elevation. Most of the time that is 100% on that grant. The second program is for acquisition. I want to be very clear, when we use that word, that is strictly voluntary. If your property has been damaged, it's been destroyed. And a lot of times, this is the last-ditch effort for the citizen to be made whole again. They have a flood insurance, they can apply for FEMA to buy that property. They look at tax card value, they look at comps, much like a real estate transaction, to determine the value or the offer, and then that becomes green space.
So basically, whatever the market value of that home is, is what, after thorough research and investigation, is what they would settle for.
They can go for the tax card.
Tax card.
No, it's fair market value one day before the storm.
One day before the storm.
And there's no commitment until, it's just like if you've done a regular real estate transaction until you sign close the paperwork, you can back out any penalty.
That would be beneficial to a lot of people, eh?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, be timed. Because if the value is market value, we understand the market value is up because of sales data, that should be a benefit for them.
Adrian can tell you, the people that walk into our headquarters and sit down and tell or tell us over the phone their story, it's absolutely heartbreaking. Some people can scoff at an acquisition by FEMA. There are people that are paying mortgages on a house that no longer exists. Why try and to put food on the table, house their family, still make the mortgage pay the first one? And in these cases, this might be the only way for them to halfway or fully recover.
Is this an option, they can just request right out the gate and say, I want to talk to you about this option?
As of this afternoon, we've got 11 acquisition applications, we have six elevation applications, we have 14 landslide applications. Landslide is the third program. That one is not a state-centric programming and the state doesn't execute it. Once the elevation applications we receive, once the acquisition applications come in, we send that to the state and then the state works with FEMA to complete the process. Landslide is put back onto local government. We are learning more about this program. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to learn additional information and I hope to present that at the next meeting. We have 14 landlords interested in that. We've received 94 applications for personal property debris removal. I think that number will go higher once we get the word out on this program. What we are doing, changing our strategy from public information, is we're going to do, we're having trouble getting people to understand what programs are available, mainly because difficulty in reaching them. So we're moving towards a door hanger, to where we have people working in the field and they can make contact with them at the structure or at their house, is leaving that door hanger. We're pushing the media, we're pushing social media, but we realize some people, especially our elderly population, may not be on social media or have access.
Sad thing is, you know, this area here, even if it was available, who would have ever thought you would need flood insurance?
Yeah, and it's an excellent point because as we're talking, some of these people that are paying mortgages on houses that are no longer there, were caught in the floods and it was outside. On the funding side, I'll just briefly touch on this, but we are working multiple applications to ensure that we are requesting reimbursement from FEMA on all levels. Our staff has done a wonderful job in working these applications hard. The first one that is going to go in will be for reimbursement to our fire and rescue departments. We've been able to capture that information package, that work has ended, whereas the EOC's work is continuing. We have that 180-day period for the EOC to operate under that federal chair and we're making sure we are not leaving any stone unturned when we're filing for FEMA reimbursement. Here's a few pictures, they're showing some of the work that our operations and human services section is doing. It's been a lot of coordination and assistance from nonprofit groups who have donated, campers who have donated supplies. Our local Rotary has infused or donated a significant amount of money to the Emergency Operations Center to be able to fix issues quickly when they're found or address critical needs to our citizens when we're working in the field and our sincere thanks to them. And we've had a number of citizens that have made donations strictly for hurricane victims and that's much appreciated. These folks received a camper setup, improved their living conditions, and that's the type of work that is going on the ground every day. With that, you have any thoughts? Again, I can't say enough things about the team and the community and the nonprofits, the churches, the folks that are banding together to push this recovery. the churches, the folks that are banding together to push this recovery mission forward. We're local, we live here, we work here, and we will not leave our citizens behind. And we'll continue to advocate for them at every time.
Thank you, William, and your staff. We appreciate all that you guys have done, and just, I don't know what else we can say. We thank you, and we see what you're doing, but we can't give you enough thanks for the kind of work that you've done.
We appreciate that.
Can I mention a few things just to build on the great report he's given you tonight? I filled in several questions from board members as well as calls we've received about the tax value of impacted properties. Say, my home is no longer there, half of it's there, et cetera. And so anticipating that, once we were, you know, probably a month or so after the storm, we started sending out our tax appraisal staff, and so they have, the list is ever-changing, and we're adding people as soon as we find out about somebody that we didn't realize had been impacted, et cetera. But Will and his staff have done a great job of getting as many people as we know, property owners that were impacted. Those addresses are being given to the tax staff to make sure if they're impacted, it's reflected in an updated listing, and so they would have a reduced value. So it might just be a land value that's left, it might be just a foundation or something in many instances, but as people get their tax bill later in this calendar year, they should see an impact on that value that's been changed, but you will have the opportunity to make adjustments if somebody slipped into the cracks. But, so that's one, and we've put out information about that and will continue to do so. The other one, Will mentioned a lot of the initial and maybe eventual work on housing repair that's happened so far, has mostly been through the VOAD initiative, volunteer groups, churches and others that have stepped forward. And that is getting people back in their homes, either in a temporary situation, a tiny home or a camper, et cetera. In some cases, they've actually gotten people back in their damaged homes. More of the long-term assistance that could be available for folks if they qualify is through what is called the CDBGDR program, and this is federal money that was recently approved by Congress that will go to the state. We had an opportunity to visit, Mr. Keller talked about last week, the Secretary of Commerce was there. We talked very briefly about that program. He did acknowledge it will be state-administered, they will be accepting applications, we will help funnel folks to their application sites, but it will not be administered by the county. But typically what happens, and we'll get, I'll just hit the highlights now, folks that are typically over CDBG income level of 120% can be eligible for assistance. So don't worry so much about the numbers right now, but typically, it's no more than 80% of area income, and this goes up to 120, so they'll try to catch more eligible households. And so this is going to take time to roll out. He made it sound like it would be the summer before they start taking applications, and so if you imagine how long that's going to take, and that's just taking applications, and so that's going to take a long time to get people, renovations started on homes and maybe replacement homes. So without the work of the churches and the others, we'd be even further behind. So again, this may be more of a long-term solution, but we're indebted to the people that have stepped up to help. So we'll do our part to connect with those state and federal resources to make sure they're available to anyone that's interested. I'm attending a meeting Wednesday with some federal agencies, again, looking for opportunity to build, build back our communities that have been impacted as strong as they can be. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, William. Moving along to the old business, item A, under old business, our water system project. Mr. Wood, if you would, give us a quick...
Very quick updates. Again, you can, you've had this information, you can read, but NEBO Phase 1, it's mostly along 126 going out towards the county boundary. A few other side streets has been completed. It was activated last week, and so we're starting to activate customers on that section. Happy Tom Hollow, that project is complete, and we've got customers on that section as well. Phase 2 and 2B, sometimes numbers are meaningless to you, but this is Memorial Park Road, almost to the city limits. That project has started as well, and involves moving a master meter, so that's a pretty complicated part of that project. East End, which is around 126, around the Lake Club area, again, another grant we received. Bids are out, they're currently scheduled to be opened next week, but we're contemplating moving that back about two weeks to give contractors a little bit more time. We have plans for what I call the Exit 90 Project. Those came last week as well, so they're under review. And then Phase 3, which is probably the last that will be done under our state appropriation, is under review as well with local staff as well as state staff, and comments are being received. And then the Providence area, West Marion Elementary, that, which, the goal of serving that school as well as the community around it, survey is complete on that community. The plans are due to be in our hands, 60% plans on 15th of February. So we'll keep trucking along on that, and then you have some memos attached with some of those dates.
Thank you. If you will give us a broadband update, too, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. As I've reported before, and you've had representatives of both Spectrum and Skyrunner before you, the GREAT, and these are acronyms, the GREAT and CAB funded projects are underway. They had some, especially Spectrum, had some delay with Helene Response repairing their, you know, prior work as opposed to building new, but they're back on track, and so they're both out in the community. We have gotten, received calls, probably on both of these projects, when are they coming, why aren't they here yet, those sorts of things, people are anxious. The Spectrum project is scheduled to be complete by the end of this calendar year. Skyrunner's project, they have until the end of 2026 to complete their project. They have indicated, I believe here, maybe six months ago, that that is not their intent. They would like to be done this calendar year as well, in case you get calls. I've mentioned there will be a second round of CAB that has been posted. The deadline of letters of interest is January 21st, and that is completely state and federal-funded, and the county will participate in that screening process. And so hopefully, maybe by the February meeting, we might have some updates on that one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say real quick to Mr. Wood, and I appreciate him, I talked to him at lunch and had some questions, how many houses will be served by these two grants? He said, he got back tonight to his 2,000. How many houses, I said, will be left without internet after that? He says 2,143, and so asking, let's submit, let's get a plan as a board together, so we can try to address the remaining 2,143. That way we have broadband everybody in McDowell County. So thanks for actually giving that information to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the next item's, I think, an action item, Mr. Wood, an employee leave policy.
Yes, sir. You asked this be tabled at a prior meeting, or two or three. This is something that was brought forward several months ago as a request to be looked at, and as I believe I mentioned maybe last month or the month before, the draft policy you have in front of you was from, again, full disclosure, McDowell Tech, who, as I've indicated before, the state of North Carolina, the General Assembly passed a law that all state agencies had to have an employee leave policy for parental leave, for families that are adding children through either adoption or birth. And so we took the college's policy, and I did not leave well enough alone, there were some comments last month or before, perhaps under the adoption item, and I did go ahead based on some of that feedback where defined an eligible child being under the age of 18. I did drop that to six, based on some of the feedback I heard about maybe making it more relevant to children that were not in school, but that can always be changed or struck or what have, what have you. But again, what it would do is for, especially for mothers that are giving birth, it would give more of a leave for those mothers, but for parents that are adopting a child, it would still provide some amount of leave, just not as much.
What's the pleasure of vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a couple of comments, and I'll make a motion. I do think it's important to have our policies match, and so our current policy for any employee who is a new hire is that 30 days they receive their health insurance benefits. And so an employee that we hire could possibly have some major surgery coming up, and we're self-insured that they don't tell staff, so that could be a potential out there we don't know of. So I would just say that I am totally for making sure we have ways for our ladies and/or people who adopt to be able to spend some time at home, and so I like the 30, I like a 30-day to match up with our current healthcare policy, and the salary's already budgeted for that position when the board adopts a budget, so it's not like you're doing more money, but you are allowing time for that mother to bond with that child. I think it's very important to have that bonding time with them, and it's basically just a benefit to the employee, I would say, but I'm in favor of it.
Okay, is that in a motion form to approve that?
Well, I mean, I can do that. Does anybody just want to?
And if so, what about the lowering the age to?
I'm totally open to that, too, whatever the board's pleasure is. I'll make a motion to get it started, and then we can amend it if we need to. I'll make a motion that we approve the policy as presented by staff with the change being, you don't have to be here 12 months, you'd be eligible 30 days, just the same to match our healthcare availability to our employees when they hear 30 days, they get, they can get the health coverage at that point, and to, and so that's my motion, and I'll be glad to hear what amendments come forward, if there's a second.
We've got a motion, do we have a second for discussion?
You can, you can second, and then we can discussion, bring up anything you want. I'm totally open to amending it.
I do understand David's health insurance, but the, I, in private industry, it's usually a 12-month thing, and I am going to vote against that motion as it stands. I do think that it needs to be a 12-month. I do, I am for leave policy, I am for the six-year-old adoption, I am for that, but I'm going to vote against the current motion.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
For 30 days.
Right.
Yeah, we have to, we have to finish the first motion that was made, which was made by Commissioner Walker first, and he made a motion. Do we have a second on that one?
I do, I second that one.
Okay, we've got a second on that one, and any other discussion?
No other discussion.
And Mr. Chairman, you know, if the commissioner wants to talk about that age, I'm open to a possible...
I do, I would, I would not want to drop that age to six, simply as an incentive to help kids in our county get adopted above the age of six. It's very hard for a child who's in foster care to be adopted the older they get, and so it, it could help a family who's contemplating adopting an older child know that they would have that time home with the child, and so I can see that lowering the age could affect an adoption process even. So, you know, I agree with the 30 days, if that's how it is, if that's when our health insurance starts, I understand that, but lowering it to the age of six might cause some problems with adoptions, so.
So you would vote for his motion, but you'd want to change your feelings about the way that it was presented about this?
What stage?
So what was, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, so what was presented last time was 18, or younger than 18, I believe, and so there was a change made to below six based on the discussion and feedback, but so right, that what you have in front of you is younger than age six, but if you would like to go back, I think you would have to amend your motion to, if you, you so desired to have it go back.
I'm totally open to amending a motion as stated before I made a motion, so I would amend the motion, and I understand what you're saying about the need, it's harder for older kids to be adopted, and so I understand the need for a parent to be there, or adopted parent to be there, so I would amend it to...
18.
Below 18, age 18. 17 and under, I guess.
So if you don't mind me just summarize, and so the only change based different, or two changes based on what was presented, was the implementation going from being 12 months as an employee to 30 days, and then reverting the age back to younger than 18. That's the motion, the second.
Okay, we have the motion, second on that. You know, the only thing I will say, you know, and I, like Patrick, I have a little caution in this with a little caution, because there's always those that will take advantage of situations, and, you know, certainly that can't be stopped, but hopefully, hopefully that won't be an issue, but there's always that opportunity for people to take advantage, so, but anyway, I guess that's between them and God, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along now to the new business under item A, budget update, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Mostly updates, there are some action items. You have the property tax collection report through the end of December from your tax collector, the most recent sales tax report. As far as action, you have the capital project ordinance amendment three, which is related to the state water-funded project, the 11 million from state appropriation, and then budget amendments GF 8 through 16, and then opioid F1, which is part of our ongoing opioid fund settlement.
Pleasure of vote.
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second. Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B is administrated by, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. You have three items, you have two leak requests in the NEBO water system, you have a reimbursement resolution for two vehicles we're hoping to purchase for building inspections, two pickup trucks, the financing would happen at a later meeting, and then EMS write-offs for uncollectible accounts. I will note this is for two months here.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to accept the administrative items as presented.
And second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the Commissioner Committee assignments.
And that was tabled until?
Yes, that's correct. Tabled until next month. So item D would be board appointees, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you. There's an application for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Applicant is Danielle Brock, and this was given as an appointee by the VA Health Director.
Is this a first or second reading?
I believe it is, it's a mandated seat.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Make a motion we approve the request.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and then I put in each one of your spaces a late submission for the America 250 Committee. This was after the agenda was put together. The applicant is Betsy Watson. It looks like she's a member of Rotary, she's a volunteer at the line, she's got experience in event planning, marketing, promoting events, and she's excited to be on the committee.
I make a motion we approve Ms. Betsy Watson... And make a motion we approve Ms. Betsy Watson to be on the committee.
Got a motion, we'll hear it, second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Wood, is the tax matters, would you?
Yes, sir, these are routine tax matters, discoveries, releases and rebuilds.
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second. Motion and second, we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Citizen comments, do we have anyone signed up?
Yeah, we got a sheriff, I don't know if anyone's speaking again or not, he'll continue.
Okay. If that's it, then moving along to commissioner staff reports.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, and I need to, as a motion I can, but for budget coming up at the end of June for approval, I'd like to ask for the nonprofits to present to us who we give money to, and how it's used, and what was done over the past year with the money. If I need to make that a motion I can, if I can just make a request so that they, so you can go ahead and schedule.
Can you make a motion?
I'd like to make that as a motion, so that they can come in over the next few months to present to us in, one, how they spend their money and what good it's doing, so.
Second motion. I think it's good to have an update, Patrick, too, it's a good.
I do, too, it's a good, good motion. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That's it, do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
Somebody?
Second. Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.